All right, well, let's call the meeting to order. Do we have enough? I'm just trying to look. Dan, Megan, Jeff, Jeff, Mike, David Ross, and Joyce Shavers, and myself. Am I missing someone or no? Everyone?
I'm here.
Here's J H seven eight six.
Okay, so everyone. Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. So the first item is just sort of just a brief comment for myself, which is, you know, I just want to once again thank Bob, Lisa, Cheryl, Doreen, all of our teachers, everyone for really doing a yeoman's job during this very difficult time, helping out, communicating with parents, communicating with the kids. And we really appreciate your leadership during all of this, all of these, you know, difficult times. And to that end, obviously, there's a lot of things that are happening day by day, things coming down from the state and from the federal government. And so I just, you know, just to reiterate, there's, there's a lot of stuff happening day in and day out. And we will have sort of intermittent, we'll have our regular board meetings and we'll try to do some meetings to keep people up to date. But I just want to make sure we're appreciative of all the, you know, amazing stuff that Bob's been doing, trying to keep this thing going. And really make decisions on the fly and work with local superintendents in our other boa districts to make sure that we're doing what's best for our kids and trying to keep some education going as we continue to be out of school for the foreseeable future. Bob, take it away.
Okay, thanks, Steve, and thanks, everybody, for being part of this meeting. James, I'm gonna just say, I think I'm still on two mics. I don't know if you can do anything about that. So I just want to say, who are out there listening, whether you're on the meeting or whether you see this later on, thinking of all of you, we hope that you're in good health. We miss you, and we want you to remember to practice all the safety precautions. As you probably saw today from First Selectman Beth Heller, there are three confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Woodbridge. So we just urge you to be very, very careful. And again, I'm still hearing the echo, James, so let me know what I can do for that. I do want to just say that I'm very grateful to my administrative team for what they've been doing over the past few weeks. I can't tell you how much work has gone into just keeping everything moving forward and taking in all the information from the state, from the governor, from the commissioner, from everything. I also want to say that we are very grateful to our parents. Our parents have been amazing. Parents have been amazing for just being patient and just hanging in there and waiting for information, which we've been trying to give little by little. This is a new approach. This is something that we have never done before, no one's done before. This is basically flying the plane as we build it. And that, that term and that, that image is very, very real here. We are trying to work very closely with our boa colleagues, with our legal counsel, and doing everything to do what we should do for kids as we get ready to launch our distance learning this coming Monday. I do want to say that there's many legal questions still that are out there. There's, there's worry about not doing this all perfectly. Those are normal worries that people have. People are juggling their private lives and their professional lives and all the challenges in between. I just want to thank everybody for what they're doing, all of our teachers and staff and our administrative leadership that's going on. I'm going to turn this over to Doreen, Lisa, and Cheryl, who are going to talk a little bit about our distance learning, what we've been doing and our plans so far, where we've come from, where we are now and where we're going. I just really want to thank these three professionals for all they've done. Go ahead, Lisa, if you can get us started.
Thank you.
Why don't you mute yourself?
Say again?
Mute yourself.
Okay, I'm trying to get back to my screen. I'm having a little problem here. I'll try to do that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to sign back on, so I'll let them talk and I'll sign back on.
Okay, all right, I want to just echo what Bob said. I have to start with a ginormous thank you to especially our staff. They have been working incredibly hard the last couple of weeks. They started actually right the week that we were making the decision to close before we had made that final decision. They started prepping some supplemental learning packets for our students, and they did this on very short notice and a very short turnaround time and ended up working really tremendously hard to make sure that our students were going home with something to do and to keep them a little bit busy and a little bit engaged in learning. Last week and before, we had talked to them about a distance learning plan. Our teachers had already started talking and emailing and making some preliminary plans all on their own without us even asking them to. They've really been jumping into this and really, really working tremendously hard. So they started last week making some plans and then officially this week, we did start on Monday with some professional development and a huge shout out to our technology department because they led remote professional development for all of our staff. And our STEAM teacher, Heather Minardi, was also in on that, helping out a lot with the teachers. And we started on Monday with just professional development around how we're going to operate in this brave new world that we're in and how we're going to communicate with each other, how we're going to be able to have more of these virtual meetings. So we started that on Monday and then the teachers have spent this entire week working remotely to plan for distance learning and is most definitely like Bob said, building the plane as we're planning it. And it's a whole new way of teaching and delivering instruction that we're all sort of getting used to and thinking and talking and learning about. They have spent a lot of time in meetings and just a tremendous amount of work and collaboration that Doreen is going to speak to more in just a second. In addition to all of that, we've had a lot of communication with parents. I'm sure you've been receiving all of that. We did a technology survey out to all parents to find out who needed devices, who needed internet access. We have had ongoing communication and updates with our parents pretty regularly, if not daily, at least every other day, sharing information as we have it. It's been changing. As you know, the state has been changing hourly, it feels like. Sometimes it feels like we say one thing and then we hear something different from the state. So it's been, you know, a little bit challenging to keep up with all of the updates and all the changes, but we've been really trying to do the best we can to communicate a lot with our teachers. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Merrill. She's gonna talk a little bit more about the tremendous amount of collaboration, but I just have to just emphasize one more time that our staff have been working really, really, really hard to get this up and running and managing all of that in the middle of also staying at home with their own families and their own children and trying to manage their own personal lives as well as their professional lives. So I just have to continue to emphasize the amount of work that they are putting into this and their passion and their just tremendous love for their students and the work that they're doing. So Ms. Merrill, you want to take over and talk a little bit more about some of the collaboration that's been going on?
Sure. What I'm gonna talk about doesn't even begin to touch upon how much work has gone into the preparation that our teachers have done these last two weeks, but I'm gonna try to convey that to you. Collaboration has been ongoing multiple times daily between administrators, grade level teachers, coordinators, specialists, WEA leadership, and all of this is happening via Google Hangout meets. Grade level teams are meeting daily to collaborate and plan lessons together. Our coordinators, math, language arts, science, and our English language learner teacher have met as a team to plan for ways in which they will provide supports to students. And they've also continued to meet with grade level PLC teams that each of them supports. Our specialists have planned with their respective partners and continue to provide lessons to each grade level teacher. Library and technology teams are working together to plan for their students as well, working with all faculty to make sure teachers have access to all the additional resources they need. So those are just some bulleted points, but like I said, it doesn't even begin to explain what this really looks like on a daily basis. It's, it's really quite amazing to be part of these meetings with all of these teachers along with our partnership with the WEA leadership. I'd like to also just give a 504 date. So all of our students who currently have 504 plans, the accommodations for them will be kept in place by their teachers during the distance learning that will be happening beginning on Monday. And while we are teaching through distance learning, no 504 meetings will be taking place, and that is per the State Department of Education. I'm all set with that. Cheryl, if you'd like to give an update on special services?
I sure would. Just reiterate what everyone else has said. The special education team has done an outstanding job of sharing materials, resources, education, just coming up and creating outside the box things to meet the needs of the students. I've been fortunate to be able to work with other directors around the state to problem solve, to think, to create, and to plan. We've had a lot of communication coming from the State Department of Ed. It might be emails, phone calls, conferences, webinars, and ever changing, the same with everything else going on that everyone has spoken about. And specifically with the Bethany district, Kay Bird, I have been almost having a couple of phone calls every single day, really trying to align what we're doing and it's been, it's been helpful to have that collaboration. And we're looking for ways to work together with for extended school year services, not knowing how long this will go and what's going on. We have to plan and we may have to have more, a more robust extended school year program, also known as summer school, for our students with special needs. If there's any need that we're unable to meet, we might be able to expand that and possibly looking into the potential of doing some of that together. We also, just so you kind of know what our plan involves, case managers will be, have been communicating already, and everyone by the end of the day tomorrow will have touch base with every family. And because of the special needs of each of the students, they're having individual plans. So they're going to be talking about what works for the family, because, you know, families have a lot going on themselves. So what works with them for communication might be email, might be phone calls. Whatever works out with them, and as far as what works best for the students, may look very different. So older students might be using Google Classroom, whereas younger students, they might be sending home manipulatives and plans with video snippets for them to watch. So it's, it's really a hybrid of how, how the students will be receiving their instruction. And at the times that they get, we've, we've chosen in the boa to do one-on-one instruction rather than small group because of privacy concerns at this point. And so they'll be working with the students and the families individually to meet their needs. As far as planning placement team meetings, right now, this is giving us the guidance to hold off on those so the teachers can have time to really focus on the instruction. And because this is a huge shift in what they're used to doing, so giving them the time to develop that, work with the families and get things rolling. And then we're waiting for guidance on what will happen after that. We did some evaluations, referrals. The guidance right now is we really can't do, for example, psychological testing or academic testing because you have to have a student right there with you when you're doing that. So that makes it a little bit more challenging. So we're holding off on those. Unless there's some things that we can do, we can start gathering that information. The last thing is just so you're aware, the related services such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language, and then our BCBA, Board Certified Behavioral Analyst, will all be working collaboratively and providing services remotely also. If there's any questions or anything?
Can I just quickly say, and I would like to welcome questions, I do want to say that I am very grateful to Cheryl, Doreen, and Lisa for what they've been doing in many and maybe in most districts, I would say. The work that they're doing now in this, I will call it crisis mode, and during this pandemic is done by central office staff of curriculum directors and other supports that we don't have. And so in addition to the things that they'd be normally doing and answering lots of other questions, addressing lots of other needs right now, they've been at the forefront. They are the backbone, the meat and potatoes of everything that we're putting together. So I want to thank them as you, as you welcome your questions here. Thank you, Lisa, Doreen, and Cheryl for that. Or any board questions would welcome or just comments?
It's Joyce. I just want to say, having spoken with parents, that trying to homeschool our kids a little bit gives us a profound appreciation and respect for what teachers do. And we just want to thank you all for what you do day in and day out. Trying to do it on our own at home has, has been challenging. So thank you for that. I was wondering, I know that you have, you all have so much that's on your plate right now, but if there happens to be any time to think about this, if I could put in a request for any ideas about movement, getting the kids enough physical exercise would be very, very helpful. You know, I've got a kid that would be happy to stay in all day. And so to the extent that there are ideas out there on how to get kids moving, that'd be great.
Lisa, you want to address that?
I was just gonna say, as part of our distance learning plans that will be coming out tomorrow by classroom teachers, our specialists are also providing plans to students, Joyce. So part of the plans will include physical education. Our PE teachers and our health teacher are also contributing to those plans. So you will see ideas, lessons, activities, et cetera, that students can do for all of our special areas, art, music, PE, health, library tech, all of them. So they are all going to be included in those distance learning plans. And you can tell your kids that they have to. Today, they have to. So that might help.
I just want to, I just want to kind of play off of Joyce's first comment, which was about, you know, the appreciation for what teachers have to do, which I 100% agree in, and thank you for that comment. I think that really is very affirming for all the people who are here and watching. I had two, I would say, general conversations recently this past week with two different parents. Just, you know, just questions like out of, just run of the mill, just general conversations, and both of them had expressed very something very similar to what Joyce is saying. And really, you know, we're working hard at, you know, continuing to work on the supplemental packets we sent out on the day that we left school. And it just, it was, I guess, a reaffirmation of what you're saying, Joyce. So thanks for saying that. And there's other parents out there who I think are definitely really recognizing that. Any other questions from the board? Comments?
Bob, it's Joyce again. One more challenge that I hear from parents, especially if you've got parents that both work, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the case that both parents are working. It's just that with this distance learning, and I'm not sure how to address this. I think it's very challenging. But there, there is going to have to be parental supervision for the children, especially for the younger children, and that might be, that might be tough for some families. So I imagine that there will be some flexibility worked into how you all are rolling out the distance learning, but I thought I'd just mention that, just I'm hearing from the grapevine, that might be a tough point.
We do aim to have some flexibility as this gets rolled out, for sure. And there'll be different, there'll be different abilities for different families based upon different circumstances, for sure.
One of the things I appreciated in your earlier communication about this is the importance of being flexible, that there are these schedules that, that you're recommending or suggesting, but encouraging families to do what they can. And I think that's an important message to keep reiterating. And I also just want to reiterate what everyone else has said, that, you know, really appreciate all the effort and time that's gone into this. I know this is something that none of us, no school district was prepared for and no school district is set up to the deal with. So that's been a Herculean effort and really appreciate all you put into this.
I'll just add that on top of that, if I may, that I really appreciate how proactive everyone has been. I've just seen it in a lot of different ways. This is a time to be proactive and at the same time realize that, you know, we're not going to achieve perfection, but we'll achieve something good and let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good and let's do a good job, which I really appreciate. I feel like everyone's doing a very proactive job and really appreciate that in such circumstances as this.
The same thing, and also extra thanks to the school leadership for, for being really courageous and making the choice to, to close the schools sooner, particularly as we're seeing the epidemiological trends around the country. It was a really smart choice. And seeing the, the thing from Beth Heller today that there are three cases in Woodbridge, I said, that number could have been so much worse. So I really appreciate the leadership and having the plane take off, even if we hadn't finished building it yet. And, and I really appreciated all the communication through it. So thank you for the leadership.
Bob, what do you have on your list?
Well, so we can go to the next agenda item if that's, you know, if, if we're done with the distance learning one, we can move on to the calendar. Is that okay, Steve?
Sounds great.
Okay. Just from this aspect of the school calendar, as you know, you, you approved a school calendar earlier. Well, actually, you approved this year's school calendar last year, those of you who are on the board. And just to kind of rewind the videotape a little bit here in terms of what has been handed down by the governor and the commissioner of education and what the practice is going on right now. The governor's executive orders, or one of his executive orders was that the 180 days of school requirement was waived. And then further executive orders took place. There's been, again, and I feel for the people at the state because they have a tough job too. They really do have a tough job. And it'd be easy to, you know, say, well, they keep changing the rules, but they're, they're scrambling as much as we are. But, you know, the governor did give other executive orders. At one point, there was going to be the possibility of waivers and showing efforts towards 180 days. And so that's been eliminated. That was eliminated. So really, the, the conventional wisdom that the commissioner, through these executive orders handed down to school districts is to allow districts to keep their current calendars, the calendars that they originally intended on having, to keep those as consistent as possible internally, what's, what, you know, the vacations as well as the end dates. So that's, that was what was conveyed by the commissioner. But with superintendents have been talking a lot about that. Amity was first out of the gate and they basically confirmed that. So Amity is keeping their original end date. They're keeping their April vacation. Last night, Bethany, Bethany superintendent communicated to her board the same thing, that she was intending on keeping the calendar as it was with the end date. And both the, the end date for Amity and Bethany are both Friday, the 12th of June. And they both have the April vacation, which are both intact in those districts. And so, you know, that's what Orange and myself have also shared, and our feelings that that's what we should be doing. We also have had a recent communication from the Superintendent's Association, CAPS. There was a survey done by all superintendents, and not everybody replied, but most did. Many did, and the vast majority are keeping the April vacation and, and many of those, and the vast majority of those keeping their original end dates as well. So to keep in consistency with the boa region, it would be my position that we need to continue to stick with the calendar that we have. I think that after two weeks of intensive distance learning, as it, as it begins to unfold on Monday and all that's already gone on, and all the people were expecting anyway from December, when the last vacation really took place, that it will be a welcome time to take a break from screen time. It's very likely that unfortunately the sickness will even increase in, in the numbers, either being infected or being tested at that point may reach a pinnacle as well. And so it would be a good time that we all believe that would be important to, to preserve that, that week and to keep our end date as well. So that's what the boa superintendents are, their strong feelings, and in two districts, as I mentioned, have already signed on to that. So I wanted to let you know that that was my, my feeling as we move forward. And I would like to communicate that to families and to parents as we move forward and in the coming days.
Any comments about that?
So I just have a, and this is less directly related to this specific issue, but more related to the, the larger issue of 180 days and how we're falling, we're going to be falling short of that. And I think through no fault of, you know, our own, your, your own. We're just not going to be able to accomplish, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to accomplish that this year, 180 days. It looks like any school or any school district is going to be able to do that. Even though we're doing distance learning, that's just not going to be a great supplement for in-person instruction in the classroom. And so I'm just, I, this is something that I'm concerned about, kids falling short of that 180 days. And the fact that, you know, we're going to have some families who are more resourceful and able to do more with their kids during this time and others who are less resourceful. And just, they're just not going to be able to do as much. And so I think, you know, having an assumption that we're all kind of going to be at the same place at the end of the school year is, is likely an unreasonable assumption. And that we're all going to be in the same place in the beginning of the next school year is also an unreasonable assumption. Now, I know you're still trying to get through it. We're still trying to get through day by day, trying to figure out how to adjust to this situation now, but it is a concern of mine of like how, how we're going to deal with this going forward if we keep the same schedule. And, you know, what's it going to look like in the beginning of the next school year and how we're going to account for differences in learning over this period and, and greater differences in terms of where kids are at in the beginning of next school year?
That's a great, that's a great point, a great question. And it's, it's not one that we necessarily have an answer for. I mean, some of our administrators may decide to just provide a little insight into what they're thinking or or their frustrations with that whole, that whole area of, you know, how do we ensure? I think the variability, as you said, Mike, is going to be pronounced. I mean, you know, what families can't, some families can do a lot for their kids and some can't. It's just based on the context of their life and who's working and who's here and not there. And I, and I will just say, it's, it's a little further complicated by, you know, we really don't know, you know, even if you were to look at the summer and say, well, geez, there might be an opportunity for, you know, to do some things over the summer, and hopefully there will be, but we don't really know at this point, even if the summer will open up an opportunity to put something together that we haven't had before or to encourage more participation by students and families. The other thing that I wanted to quickly mention, just, because this came out just recently for all the board to know is that, and you'll understand why this is the case, that they have suspended, they waived the requirement for smarter balance testing, grades three through eight. And for us, it's three through six, obviously, because there's just no way we could implement that. And so there wouldn't be a measure either of student growth this year taken in April or May as we normally would. So I don't know, I don't know if any of our school administrators want to add into that conversation or just their thoughts or their, their own struggles with what Mike's talking about because it's real.
We've had just some preliminary conversations. Obviously, this has not been a major focus for us at this point because our major focus right now is getting the distance learning plans, you know, up and running. But we've had some preliminary conversations just But we've had some preliminary conversations just in passing about the impact on our curriculum and our instruction next year and how there's going to be a need next year to sort of look at our year-long pacing as grade level teams and make some decisions about how we're going to incorporate some of previous years' learning into the next grade levels learning, if that makes sense. So we've sort of talked a little bit about how there will be a tremendous adjustment to our pacing guide. But like I said, that's probably we haven't really dug into that yet. And I have the feeling that it will happen more even more next year when we're sort of facing coming back to a brand new school year after having missed some of this time now.
When did we do our last star testing for the students?
January.
So, you know, I mean, that that might be a way of getting a sense of kind of where people left off. And you'll be able to tell because we do, it's a it's a scaled test across all grades. It may be a good thing. I don't know if we can do it as an online or if it's got to be in person, or if maybe at some point before the start of the year next year, we consider looking at star testing data to say how many of our kids got some, got something out of home learning, how many of our kids didn't get any learning? And maybe we do need to do something about who's starting where. Maybe there's some transition classes that we don't have, say, a third and a fourth grade. Maybe we end up with a third grade, a third plus grade and a fourth grade with a classroom of kids who really fell behind and we use that year to catch them up. But I think that we have data from sort of before this all started in January. You know, it it's really not that old data and we can chart how kids were doing. And I think that that's an important data point. If we could get one. Obviously, we get one before the summertime, but if we can, as soon as we're back in school or even able to access school, I think being able to look at kids and seeing where things are would be a very helpful thing for us to sort of tailor educational programs for next year.
I actually have a couple of questions relating to that. You know, in part, the real challenge here is we start thinking about distance learning is how are we defining our learning objectives and how are we going to know who's meeting them? So there's almost a sense of having testing at the end of the year that was really transparent, could be incredibly valuable to be able to say if you're in this grade, this is what we are hoping that you would be able to do at the end of the year in a really transparent way. Here are your goals. There's there's perverse experiment in competency-based education here of saying, you know what, you have this amount of time to do this amount of work and let's see how well people do in different settings. And then how do we help people achieve that through distance learning plans? So I'm sort of, I'm really curious about that. I don't know if that's the proximal question, though. I think the proximal question is thinking about the calendar. And I'm also a little curious, like, can you just help us understand what are the factors that as far as how you're thinking about why we should make the decisions that we make? It sounds like everybody's burned out and needs the break in April, which if that's the case, God bless. But it it seems as if it's very unlikely we're convening in person anytime. So so the end date, like, why why would we decide now necessarily what the end date is? Or can we wait and see? Like, like, what what drives that decision?
I think part of it, what drives it is inquiry by parents wanting to know, you know, what so what's it going to be? Because I know my, I know my older student at at the Amity Middle School or the high school, I know when their end date is and we're still hoping to take off in the family vehicle to go somewhere or whatever. And that may be, that may be optimistic, but but there's there's that inquiry on the family basis. There is probably also the the trying to be consistent with our neighbors for that reason. There are staff members who are parts of unions who are, and I'm in the in the middle of trying to work on a memorandum of understandings with each of the unions in terms of defining how the work is now different. What are we doing differently? You know, what are we expecting? What's changed? And also part of that is what's the calendar and what, you know, what what's 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 going to happen at the end? And so those are some of the things that drive it. I think also there's there's a driver of not only for the, not only for the vacation itself, the April break, which, you know, I think would be beneficial for people just to take that step back before they venture into at least eight weeks more. But what's the point of no return when you get to the middle of June and say, okay, you know, for a family themselves, the family could say, okay, I'm done with my high schooler, but now I've still got to go for one week or maybe two more weeks. Is it one or two more weeks with my elementary kid? I do think that it's more challenging to, as a parent, as a family, to do this with elementary students and high school or middle school because of the independence factor. So we don't want to burn families out. And so I think there's there's a real, there's a real life part of that as well. I think those are some, a lot of the things that have gone into our conversations, Boa superintendents to that.
Can I introduce something, Bob?
And then we have, we also have E S Y in terms of trying, maybe trying to capitalize on the end of June for extended school year services, potentially if the virus clears and we're able to get students in to do some of that in June versus like special education. Go ahead, Cheryl.
That's exactly what I was going to say, that piece. And then the other part is concern if staff are working straight through and then working through summer, they're really not getting a break. And this is overwhelming, this process. It's brand new. It's not you know, how teachers are familiar with it. So it's I'm concerned that people may not want to work summer school after, if they're if they're going right backing up to summer school.
Summer school might be crucial or it will be crucial if we're able to offer it based upon where the virus is at this point. Well, maybe maybe summer school will be done by distance learning too. I don't know.
We don't know. Time will tell.
I have one question. I mean, we haven't said it out loud, but it sounds like there's no intention that we're going to be going back into the school for the conclusion of school. But that was never said. So is it just, you know, is that not happening?
So so all we all we have right now is the governor's latest order is that schools stay closed through April 20th. Beyond that, there's nothing official, but the very next day after he said April 20th is your new end date to stay out. The next day he kind of put out there and we may not be going back at all. So that kind of made people think, well, maybe maybe it's probably, it's more of a reality than not. So but nothing has been decided yet. April 20th is right now the end date for the school closures throughout Connecticut until anything else is handed down.
And do we choose that if he says you can go back? Do we ultimately choose if we go back or don't go back and continue and just finish our distance learning or go back to the school? Or is that ultimately the choice that's going to be made by the governor regardless of what?
It's hard to, it's hard to know because there's been so many surprises here, Dan, but I think, you know, I mean, I think the the likely one is that the governor would say, you know, we are now allowing all schools to go back, everybody. Or he might say, schools may go back at the local board's discretion. Or no, no schools can go back at all. We're closing through the end of the year. So I, it could be or anything in between those. You know, he, you know, before he made his edict, local districts were making their decisions like we did on their own prior to any government and any governor's, you know, executive order. So it could be done in the reverse as well.
Okay, thank you.
This is Joyce. I just want to circle back to Mike's equity issue. Because I I do think that with families having a lot of resources compared to families that, for whatever reason, don't have the resources. We are going to have quite a big disparity in what kids are going to be able to do. And you know, back to Steve's point about using the STAR results from January, which is not that long ago. Could we proactively target a pop, the population that we think we need to focus on to make sure that they lose less than they would otherwise, were we not to do anything? Because as we've heard, the performance gap over the year seems to be getting greater and greater. And so with what's going on, the worry is that that gap is going to become greater yet.
I might ask one of my administrative colleagues to add in. I will say that while I I I agree that the state with you, the state gap has seems to have grown. We've been able to shrink that gap in the last year as measured by our smarter balance. But I think, as you point out, that the the potential for the gap to be widened in this, in this particular situation is very, very real. And, you know, some of our summer programs are done by I E Ps or by P P Ts, like there's, there's mandated special education services over the summer for some. We do have one of our programs that actually invites students. It's it's done by invitation because they know the students needs are there. Student may not have qualified for special education, but there's still a need for review, practice and continuation of skills. So that's the kind of program that in this situation, as we're watching, as teachers are watching during the course of the distance learning, especially if it continues the whole time, we might be if we were able to broaden something like that in the summer, if we can have staff who are willing to come back and do that in the summer to to offer that to more kids to perhaps help to reduce that gap. So thinking like that or or taking programs and expanding them or recreating them or refocusing them might be one of the ways to do that. I don't know. Anybody from the team want to jump in on that?
I was going to say, two steps that we sort of address equity things on our, the equity concerns on our standpoint. Like I mentioned, we did put out that technology survey and we also actually asked teachers to share with us names of any students who they were concerned about, either didn't have access to a device or didn't even have internet at their homes. And we actually made a bunch of phone calls to families who were on that that list to check in with them to see if they had devices, if they had internet access. So we we were tackling just sort of the access to internet and to devices pretty comprehensively, I think. And we had one round of iPad device pickups today. Many thanks again to our tech department for coordinating that and supporting that work. And and then we're going to have another round next week because we've had a number of parents who have said, oh, actually, I do need a device or, you know, I don't have enough. So we're we're doing that. Some of our teachers have also already reached out to students who they are particularly concerned about. And they have either done that through phone calls or through emails. So they've already started, they already started doing that. Even when we first shut down, our teachers were reaching out to some students that they were particularly concerned about. And the last thing I was going to say is that our interventionists, in addition to working collaboratively with all of the grade level teams, they have also actually devised their own ideas for how they can support the students that they work with from afar. And I know that they are, they have plans in place for the ways that they can encourage students to continue the work that they've been working on with them and to sort of encourage parents to communicate with them should parents feel that their child needs some additional supports in place. So we've, we've done a few things to already to sort of address that. And I suspect as we get our distance learning up and running that it will, we'll continue to sort of think about this area and focus on it more.
I want to just add to that. Lisa, I agree with you. To answer Joyce's question, January data from STAR results have been looked at. And so students that there was concern, there was extra services put in place for them. And so those are the ones that people are aware of and targeting extra instruction.
Can I add one more thing? Sorry. I should, I should mention also, I'm sure that you're aware of this, but there is a number of resources that are all of a sudden either becoming more readily available or they are more quickly signing our student data privacy or they are taking steps and measures to allow us to work with them. So our technology department and our teachers have been finding a tremendous amount of supplemental materials and resources that's giving them just some more access to some programs and technologies that we have not necessarily had as much access to or any access to. So that's the other thing that's been happening as a result of everything happening, that a lot of companies are really sort of jumping in and pitching in and providing some support. And again, our teachers and our technology department are finding those things and you know, really, really working hard to create a very comprehensive list of supplemental programs and technologies to support our kiddos at home too. I should have added that too.
I was wondering for the special education population. And I, I think that we have to rely on distance learning. But having said that, it occurs to me that that learning remotely for that segment of the population might be particularly challenging.
Agree. And there is definitely a spectrum of needs even within students with I E Ps. So students who are have more significant needs, they're really having to think outside the box and be creative of how those services are delivered and working with families on how to do that. Some of them distance learning on different that are out there, but there's also teacher-developed materials. So we've been working in our office of getting items copied and sent home for families to have books and manipulatives and different things. So people have been wonderful about coming and picking them up. And then it'll evolve as we get, as we go along, but each teacher knows their student and is working with the families to hopefully meet the needs the best they can.
Any other questions? This was about calendar. We started off this way, but okay. What else you got, Bob?
So I'm, 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 I know, I know there's, I know there's questions. I know it's, I know there's a not easy, but I, my, my sense here would be that I would be in coordination with our Boa neighbors, I would be communicating to our our families about our calendar and that our calendar that we have now will continue to be honored in its present current form.
Absent objection from any board members?
You know, like a motion and a vote or just?
I think you improve the calendar. So I, I'm just, you know, unless someone has a reason to speak otherwise, then we bring up a motion to change it.
I defer to the full group and I defer to Bob, but I would say it seems I don't know how we're making a decision about something five months from now or three months from now, whatever it is, given that everything changes so radically in a span of one or two weeks. And to me, like, if it were possible to delay the decision just to see what happened in the next two to four weeks. Because we could imagine other permutations, but I don't, I don't want to make a fuss.
I mean, the only thing I would say is, I would say the same thing that you're saying is what we decided to do at Yale New Haven Hospital two days ago, which seemed crazy at the time, now seems like we were even crazier, did not do something more than that. So every day is a new day in this. And so something miraculous happens, we can come back as a board and say, we're changing the calendar and we're going until the end of June. All of a sudden, the students were back in four weeks. So I think for now, Bob, I think the takeaway is we're committed to the calendar as is, but I, I think that we would reserve the right to do anything. I think most importantly is the April vacation is two weeks from now before our next board meeting. So leaving that as is because we're leaving the calendar as is.
The the other extreme, right? Like you could imagine is is if the situation continues to get worse, right, that we might say, we really want another break four weeks after the April break because everybody's beat up. Nobody's going anywhere over the summer because there's travel bans in place. And we actually forget June 12th, we don't care. Like, you know, we don't know. Right? So that's the only reason I would advocate flexibility.
I get you. Yeah, that's good. Yeah, that, that, God forbid, but that's good point.
And I I feel similarly, I, I, I'm fine with approving a calendar today, but I to David and Steve's point, I think we should reserve the right to come back and change that as we learn more.
I would agree with that too. So it might be good to just sort of have a little bit of a hint to that effect in any expression of maintaining the same calendar.
Bob, you can share that with the Boa, other Boa superintendents that, you know, we're fine for how we're planning right now, but we could
We're not sure about this. Not sure about the surprises around the corner that might impact future decisions on that.
Yeah, and this can call a meeting at any point and change anything that we do.
Okay. Gotcha. Gotcha. And I know one thing I'm going to hopefully guarantee is that we're not going to have any more days added because it's snow. So we'll see what happens there. The next, the next item is it's under employment contracts and agreements. And really, to tell you the truth, I just as a courtesy, we uploaded these, but I'm not really reviewing anything. What I'm really just wanted to update you on is what we are doing for this dramatic change that took place where all of a sudden things stopped. It stopped dead in their tracks in the school. And so it's all about wage continuance and benefits continuance for our employees right now. And I've spoken to the town as well. What I'm going to describe to you is we are in sync with the town of Woodbridge in what they are doing and what we are doing. with the town of Woodbridge and what they are doing, what we are doing. We are as they are. Continuing wage continuance for all of our regular employees, all the people who are regular participants in our workforce, you know, whether you might call people essential or non-essential and those terms have been thrown around, that means different things in different organizations. But we're guided by the heart and not necessarily anything else at this point. But I think that's how Beth Heller has felt as well. They had a meeting this past week for selectmen and they are continuing wage continuance for all of their employees who are regular employees. We're doing the same thing right now. The money is budgeted. You know, and I can say that, you know, for most of our employees, we have very, very specific work that continues to go on. There are other groups that we are looking to see how they're going to be part of the solution and part of the support of the distance learning. But, but that's what I just wanted to bring that to your attention because that's what their districts, some of our districts around us are doing as well. Our administrators and our teachers, our office staff, nurses, custodians are either working, well custodians are on the site all the time. Everybody else is working on a partial remote basis, half remote, half onsite. And we're trying to reduce the contact between people in the building. If you have to be in the building, like an administrator or office people where we've made that allowance so they can take work home and work from home, which is what the town hall is doing as well. We are working at delineating through, again, these memorandum of understandings with each of the unions, how we will assign duties to other groups, like our teacher assistants and our food services people as we move forward. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention right now. Again, the money is budgeted, so it's, you know, and that's, I think, how the town has felt as well on that. So do we have any questions about that? Or any comment?
Who does the local 222 cover?
I don't have that number. I think that's the CILU. That's the custodians, secretaries and yeah, yeah.
That's what it appears to be. I just wanted to clarify it.
Yeah, that's food service, custodians and secretaries. And I, and I wanted, and thanks for bringing that up Dan, because that, that just makes me want to say that, you know, our custodians have been there and they've done yeoman's work and I'll talk about the facility cleaning in a moment. But they've done an absolutely fantastic job and continue to do that and they're, and they're, and you know, it's the old story and you can get to some things that you've never had a chance to get to because of just, you know, there's like cleaning out the basement or whatever it is, but they're doing extra kinds of cleaning. And I'll talk about that in a moment. Extra projects that are helping to bring our facility up even higher standard. Our secretaries have done yeoman's work as well during this time.
That brings up a good point. I know of some contractors that are giving additional discounts for work that's completed now because they're trying to keep their staff busy. So if there was, I know that some school districts are utilizing that. So just be aware of that. If there's something that you needed to get done, you may have a better negotiating position.
Okay. You can send me, if there's anything specific you want to send to Al and I in Vito, you feel free to send that. If there's any specific information, we, we welcome that. This, this whole area, the area of wage continuance is something that the town and I believe we will probably also revisit, you know, on a every three to four week basis in terms of where we are and, and how we've been able to move the needle on engaging everybody in the work that needs to be done. That's our plan right now.
Do you have anything on the miscellaneous contracts or was that just information?
Miscellaneous contracts, I just wanted to say, I know one of, one of the questions that's come up statewide and even locally is about bus contracts. And interestingly, interestingly enough, just, just before this meeting today, in fact, this afternoon, maybe an hour or two before the meeting, there was information that came down that there may be a governor's executive order that regardless of what your bus contracts say, you have to pay the entire bus contract regardless of what your feelings are on that. Now, we believe that our contract was, would need to be honored. Our contracts would need to be paid because of what the language is in our contracts and, and the actual things that our contractors, both B and B as well as Chris Sorenson do for us. They have to continue to maintain things like testing for their drivers. Even though the drivers are sitting there, they still have to take care of the testing. They have to take care of the bus inspections. They have the vehicle payments, vehicle insurance, all those kinds of things. This is an area that you have to have, you have to have ready to roll when you are going to be re-engaging school to start again. So bottom line is, you know, it was our, is our feeling that supporting our owner operators was important because our contract says it, but also because of who they've been. But now it seems to be this afternoon that there's going to be a government, governor's executive order to do that anyway.
But we are saving money on fuel because we pay fuel separately, correct?
I believe so. And if Al could just chime in for a minute on that, is that true Al, that we would be saving on fuel?
We wait for Al. We're paying our contract. Are we sure that they are paying their employees? I know that most of them are owner operated, but some of them do have employees as well.
Right. That's our understanding at this time. And it's something that we'll want to kind of revisit, especially when this governor's order comes down as well, but something that we would want to. I, I understand that point. And that's a question actually I had at one point as well. It's our understanding that that is the case. And the critical things in, in the governor's, in, in the banter back and forth has been two things. One is making sure you preserve the workforce of the drivers and the people who support the drivers in the yard. Number two, also making sure that the company, while we're in this context of not operating, that there's no profits being made. And I think a lot of the profits that a bus company is going to make is generally more at the secondary level than they are at the elementary because they, they really make their gravy on all of the extracurricular activities and all the extra bus rides that are done for different sports and those kinds of things. So, which we don't really have a lot of that, but we do share with Amity in, in the whole bus structure. So Al, I don't know if you've had a chance to get on at this point to talk about fuel. He may, he may have an issue with his audio. I'm pretty sure. I'm pretty sure we're saving on fuel. Yes, without him chiming in on that.
Okay.
Food service update? So food service update, I just wanted to mention to people that the food service program that Boa has put together for families, it's been an absolute amazing success. Today, there was actually, we've gone from around 100 served per day to now 400 children served per day. And this is just a great service. And I went over and visited it yesterday and they have a, they have a great setup. Chart Wells is obviously doing the, all the preparation. We have some of our staff over delivering or actually giving it to the, as you, you may know about this, cars come through, they have a sign in their window. They say, on the Gilbert family, we have three kids. And then those numbers of breakfast and lunches are brought out to the car. There's very little contact that goes on, gloves and all that kind of stuff for safety. So it's just a great system. It's been worked out and it's just a great service. So just wanted to mention that that is live and well. And actually, it's gotten so popular and, and so important to have that we've now expanded it, not just at Amity High School, but now it's, there's satellites at both of the middle schools in Orange and Bethany.
Something that was brought up to me that I had not thought about was the fact that schools are sometimes the area of refuge for some children. And I don't know, I just wanted to float that out to our staff, you know, and I'm sure other people have thought of that. But I would be doing it. I didn't think of it until someone brought it up to me.
Dan, can you explain more? Are you referring to the fact that it's a place where kids feel safe or a place for a safety place from a, for a planned purpose?
Where a kid actually is safe from an unsafe home. And that they're like, you know, I'll be blunt because I'm Dan, you know, let's say dad's got a drinking problem and isn't so nice, you know? And so school can sometimes be that safe place where you don't have to hide in a bedroom for your own safety.
Well.
Thank you for saying it out loud.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for saying it out loud. It's really important.
You know, we have an obligation, obviously, when, when there's an unsafe situation, obviously, as, as we're all mandated reporters to DCF. And, you know, it, it's an interesting thing to say because you know, now we don't see kids on everyday basis. So we have less contact to see what's going on. We certainly know the families that are struggling. We know the families have, who have perhaps challenges and families that we've worked closely together. Our school psychologists and social worker know who's, who those families are and have, you know, the idea, as we do distance learning, is also distance reach out by that, that, by that staff and those staff members to check in on families to see how things are going. That would be part of their role. So I think, you know, knowing where the at-risk situations are, it would be our important responsibility to continue that in a distance, but in an accountable way. I don't know. Anybody administrative team want to chime in about that? Is there anything that comes to mind?
I would like to add, teachers have all written me with concerns and asked for follow-up and support and help as well as our psychologists and social work will be having office hours available as a resource for families too.
That's great. I just want to add the comment that although you won't be seeing kids in, you will be seeing kids in their homes. So there is potential for more information as well as less information about that kind of thing. So we need to be ready to deal with it if it comes up.
I'm glad, I'm also glad Dan brought that issue up. It's something I've been thinking a lot about. I've been really concerned about on a national level, but it applies here as well. And just recently saw some, you know, in terms of reports to Child Protective Services and what you're finding, when you're looking at that is that those reports are dramatically dropping. And so we know that that's not because there is fewer maltreatment of children across the state just because the mandated reporters aren't seeing kids. And so I think it's, it's something for us to, to pay attention to and to be really concerned about during this time where we're all social distancing and I'm having fewer contact with kids and missing a lot of the signs of potential maltreatment.
I'm glad this is being brought up because I think it just, it just, it's important for us to hear, especially those of you who either work in the area or, or are aware of the data. It's, it's helpful for us to just hear that and to reinforce what we believe in to just dig in a little deeper on that and to make sure that we don't miss the important, that important area. I did read something today, it came from, I can't remember where it came from. I've had so many emails come from so many places. I don't remember them all, but it talked about the, I think it's what you're talking about, Mike. You know, the DCF now is only receiving, you know, 5% of the reports of what they had received because they probably received so many from schools and, and places like that. So and I may, may have the wrong statistic exactly, but I think the flavor of that is, you know, we're not there to see things, we're not there to interact the same way to see that.
Right. Just a bad situation for a lot of these kids who are at risk for maltreatment to be spending. For some of those kids, it's, it's, it's a, they're going to have heightened risk of, of maltreatment because they're spending more time in those settings than a lot more time than they used to.
It also might be an area for us to check in with the town services. Lisa, I'm forgetting her name.
Nancy Fund. And she actually.
Yes, Nancy. Yeah, I saw the email today. Right? So yeah, so for us to maybe just try and join forces with her perhaps for us to, how we can maximize the two together. She might actually have, she might be able to even join, join with us at this point, some degree or another in that way.
She did mention that the social worker was available and, and working hard. And she also mentioned the food pantry and the need to keep that going for families that might require some additional food, especially as unemployment rates might rise. So Nancy Fund has already reached out to us and has sort of opened that line of communication. And I know that our, our team is already in contact with her.
The other thing I'd like to add is families who we know are going through struggles and have a DCF case manager close contact with them and reaching out continually through this process, just to make sure they're checking in also.
Great, thank you. You want to go into the facilities update, Bob? Is there anything in there? I really just want, I just, I, I think we've already, you know, given you the feel and the, and the reality that, you know, our custodial staff, even though there were no cases in our building, they have done, you know, at least known, known cases, I'll say that. It didn't make a difference what we knew about that. They have done an amazing job of re-cleaning every room using the CDC, and I have it here, using the proper cleaning chemicals that, that were suggested by CDC. They've done really a deep cleaning. And so we appreciate that. We are, we'll continue to go back and do that if rooms are entered for any reason along the way by any staff members. And they're also just going ahead and doing, moving ahead with other kinds of projects that they never have time for to bring up the level of the school in terms of appearance and of course cleanliness, but also just utilizing the space in a more efficient way. So I don't really want to dwell on that. I think there's not much to say there. I just wanted to, unless there's any concerns about facilities anybody had, they're doing a great job. And then they're a dedicated, dedicated group who's just great to have.
Reaction. I don't know what the CDC or other guidelines are, but my understanding is COVID doesn't actually stay on surfaces alive for particularly long periods of time. So if we're going to be out of the school for months, nothing that's on a surface now will have virus in two months. So it's great that they've done a deep clean. And at this point, I would say they should do all those other projects because this could be a great opportunity to get everything else done. And then two weeks before we're going to come back, whenever that is, they can do another clean.
Right. Yeah. And I think, I think that's kind of where they are right now, David. That's a good point. You know, someone said, you know, I don't know if this is true. It lives one day on cardboard, three days on plastic, nine days on other services. But someone on a cruise ship said that it lived for 18 days on a surface there. But I think the bottom line is we'll be far past that. And you're right, you know, go on other stuff and come back and clean before we re-enter the building. A lot of it's, a lot of it, to tell you the truth, to say it is, is, is doing it, peace of mind, good, it's good PR sometimes to let people know that they feel better about it. But at some point, you know, you know, it's time to move on to the projects.
All right, Bob, budget impact.
Sure. So just, just a couple of things about budget. So so what's the budget for this year on the current budget on what we're going through right now? So just on a few things. We are going to see, because of our current spending freeze, we're going to see some savings in instructional supplies, although it may be partially offset with unanticipated costs that we don't even know about for distance learning. Although have, there have been a few along the way so far, mostly technology related. We're certainly going to be saving on professional development because there were a number of things that teachers were going to be going out of the building to participate in different conferences or learning opportunities. And most of those are canceled. We will be saving some amount of money on our school resource officer because our school resource officer has been redeployed as of the point we closed the school and has been redeployed back to the police department and is filling in for positions that they had, that were unfilled. So with, you know, by putting Vinnie there, we're not needing to hire someone on overtime. So we will be getting a credit to our budget for whatever period of time, whether, you know, hopefully we'll be back before the end of the year. But however many days we're out, there'll be a credit coming to our budget for that SRO time. There are also, we anticipate some, some savings in the area of utilities. Probably we've set, setback some of the temperatures for HVAC and lighting, of course, is, is less now. We do see some of our cost overruns that will take place in the areas of legal. We're having to consult with legal quite a bit regarding the COVID in terms of MOAs and other just logistical and legal questions about how we're operating. A food service with no lunches served, we're going to lose revenue from there. And so there's going to be, have to be a contribution from the board's budget into food service. And so there's going to be have to be a contribution from the board's budget into food service. There are still some staff leaves. So we know there are some staff members who are out. We're still filling those with certified teacher substitutes. And then there's definitely some technology costs that we were not anticipating, you know, with computers and laptops being used even more now than ever. We're having to invest in some additional backup technology for the laptops that all of a sudden on the fritz and and we can't fix them fast enough or or they need to be replaced. So we haven't, we don't have all that figured out at this point. We will in in a future finance subcommittee meeting, maybe in April or May, you know, we'll have a better feel for that. But those are some of the moving targets in terms of our current budget. If there's any questions on that before I move on to next year's.
Bob, what are we looking at in terms of, are we actually looking at a surplus at this point still?
We currently have a surplus right now. And right now, so yes, we have a surplus right now of around $35,000, $40,000. I would, it's hard to know right now how these savings and overruns will balance out or play out in terms of what how that will peter that. I don't know yet. And neither does Al. It's it's there's too many moving parts right now to know that. But right now, before these things are factored in, we are in the in the right direction in the black by about 40. Any any other questions about this year? Just talk about next year just for a moment. Can you still, okay. So I don't have a lot to talk about for next year. I just, I just wanted to make sure, you know, I did send this to the board that the Board of Finance did take action on a number of town departments at their meeting, their most recent meeting. And they they reduced a total for the town of $641,000. 115 of that was our budget. And so it brings us down to zero, which was the scenario that was included in our budget book, which what it does is it reduces techno, excuse me, it reduces the library position down to a point seven. It reduces a art position down to a point seven, means that those positions will now be three and a half days a week instead of five days a week. It reduces the full-time psychologist down to a halftime psychologist higher. And it does reduce a variety of budget line items, including technology and including professional development. I think at this point, this is not a meeting where we were prepared to talk more about that. I think in the next meeting would probably be the time for that. If I just wanted to let you know, I just want to make sure that people were aware of that. I know there's a lot of things to read right now, so you may have missed that email as it was sent out. We will have to, we'll have to solidify that as we move forward and to see if there's any other moving parts. One of the things that I did have a conversation with our finance chair Joyce was, was it, and I'll kind of move into this now, another way to perhaps have more revenue for next year. Do we want to offer the verp, the voluntary early retirement proposal, one more time to certified staff? And this is said because, you know, right now, education educators are going through something they never went through before. And and I guess, you know, the plain fact is someone may at this point say, my goodness, if I'm going to have to do distance learning for the rest of my career or for the next 12 months, if it's really, really bad and we're going to go through several iterations of this, I might think twice about this. So I I put that out there as as a possibility of do, is that something that the board would like us to see? Again, the whole concept behind the verp is the idea that staff member who decides, I think I will decide to retire, as they leave at a very high step or at the highest step, replaced by a staff member at a much lower step, it gives us savings in the budget. So I'll stop talking and see if there's any commentary about that.
This is Dan. I I definitely think it's a good idea to put it back out there. You know, like you said earlier in this conversation, there's a lot of uncertainty out there and a lot of, you know, people, as you alluded to, may not want to deal with the uncertainty. And especially if they're a major part of their educational teaching experience is face-to-face interactions with kids. And if they're not getting that, maybe they're like, it's not worth it anymore because that's the really the reason I was here. So I think it doesn't hurt us to put it back out there. And I also think that hopefully some more senior staff would consider the well-being of like some of the top, I guess the more politically correct way of saying is some more of the top step staff might consider the well-being of their lower step staff members and possibly make the choice for that reason. I know at one point when I was working, I made that choice and stepped down to save three other guys. Went to go find a new job. So people can make that choice if they want.
So Bob, we're I was just going to ask if we are doing this, is it to reopen it as, would you reopen it the way it was and just do away with the early bird incentive because it's now a longer early bird incentive or? Yeah, I I think I think the idea here would be is not to offer the early bird. The concept behind the early bird was for us to be able to get it into the operating budget that we proposed to the town. Because in the old, in the old days, as they say it, we sometimes had retirements after we submitted the budget to the town and we wanted to try to front-load this. So bottom line is, I think the early bird part of it would disappear and it would just be either a cash or insurance. It would be the same concept. It's in your, it's in the meeting. If you want to look at it there, there's the earlier one from earlier this year. It would either be the cash or the insurance incentive that would be granted, but not the early bird $15,000.
If that's, if that's successful, does that allow us to not have to reduce staff in the ways that are proposed now?
It would, it would be something that would, so so what it would do. So there's a number of moving parts right now in next year's budget that we which which will need to be focused in on at our next meeting. So some of those are this. One is the potential for savings in a plan such as like this in case someone decides to opt for it. There's also, we are right now, our insurance, our health insurance, real cost to us for next year for the following year is going to be higher than we anticipated. We we had budgeted for 8% and it's coming in at at least 11, 11.5%. We budgeted a number that was realistic in December and was, you know, it would have been, you know, things change. But bottom line is that number, so we're going to have about $60,000 that are going to be added to our budget next year for unanticipated health. On the flip side, in the negotiations that took place between the WBA and the board, there is a cross-accumulation part of that plan, which will be saving us maybe roughly the same amount of money as we're on the hook for for the increased medical. So there's probably going to be a wash there. There is, so there is some other potential for savings and there also may be some potential for for costs that we haven't encountered or have really know about yet. For instance, this whole thing of distance learning and how it may play out with students who have a special education program and what we were not able to accomplish through distance learning and what might be our exposure for additional services for the following year that we haven't budgeted for. These are all really unknowns. It's really, it's really gray right now to try to figure that out. So there's a, there's still a lot of moving parts. Ultimately, if you can make. Yeah. I just make, so Mike, the answer is, I don't know if that's feedback everyone hears or just me, but when we do a teacher early retirement, we're generally talking about saving somewhere on the order of $30,000 in the year one. So there are a lot of moving parts. I wouldn't so, but if we just had everything else the same in the budget and we needed to come up with a $115,000 shortfall, one early retirement wouldn't help us. I mean, it wouldn't fix it. It would help us, but we would need to have multiple early retirements to get us to a number like that. But I think, I think there's a lot of other moving parts that Bob would probably work out. But I think this certainly, if we got two teachers to take us up on this offer, it would certainly move us in the right direction. Is that a decent summary, Bob?
Thank you.
I just want to echo Dan's comments and appeal to the sense of community out there. So part of the motivation of exploring this concept is that we would be able to, to the, to the extent that we can, keep the community together. We don't know if it will work. As Steve was saying, we need a couple of teachers to step up. But the idea is that we are trying everything we can trying to think creatively, thinking outside the box. And I really appreciate Bob's time that he spent trying to, trying to think of different options that we might have in order to try to avoid staff reductions.
Okay. So can someone make a motion that we reopen the voluntary early retirement plan as described in October?
I can do that. I motion that we reopen the early retirement plan as described in October, less the $15,000 early bird incentive.
Second to that.
Second that. I'll second that.
And the only, and I would say, Bob, how long do you want to leave that? Do you want to leave that open for two weeks, four weeks, six weeks? This is, this is all moving very fast. So to tell you the truth, I I think I'll step back and consult with Al, who has had a lot more experience with this and we'll, we'll take a look at this in conjunction with how that helps us make decisions in our, in our board meetings, probably by May, something like that. So I think it might be more in the order of four to six weeks, I would, I would think, something like that. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, I guess you can raise your hand. I see most of you are able to. All right, one, two, three, four. I see four of you. Lynn, I don't see you and Joyce, I don't see you. You guys are okay?
I know what happened to me.
I got it. All right. All right. So that was unanimous. Okay, good, perfect. That was weird. I don't know why Joyce, I haven't seen you the whole meeting. You've been there, I know. But you suddenly popped in as soon as you waved your hand.
Maybe it's movement is needed.
Okay. So Bob, do you have anything else about either 3.7 or 3.8?
I did not have anything else.
Okay. Oh, I'm gonna.
Can I ask one more question?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I I'm going to ask in advance for your forgiveness for asking this question yet again. But I just want us to make sure that we are thinking this through. We have reduced a social worker, I think a .5 social worker. And, you know, just given the number of years of experience that she has and the number of relationships that she has in the community, you know, I see that there's a .5 psychologist in there. Is there any way?
I think that we should, I don't know that we should talk, I mean, it's not, know that we should have that conversation without letting Bob a little time to look at the budget a little bit closer and maybe talk offline at a finance committee meeting about sort of specific parts of the proposal of cutting, because I think that's part of our regular board meeting in April. The goal was just to kind of quick update. Because I think all those things are going to be on the table. Did I lose you? Is that okay, Joyce?
Yeah, that that's fine. I just want to make sure that as we're talking about staff reductions in general and trying to avoid, I just wanted to make sure that that was out there. But if the right timing is April, then that's fine.
Yeah. Okay. The only other, just taking chair's prerogative, I did communicate with Nancy's mechanics and told her that I during our, this discussion, I would invite her to make a comment. So I think she's on the phone somewhere. I don't see her on my screen, but Nancy, if you're on there, unmute. And did you want to say something?
Yes. So I'd like to say first, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Also, I'd like to thank everyone with the enormous amount of work that's been accomplished lately. Teacher is an amazing community and I'm grateful to work among so many talented and dedicated teachers. The WA is very concerned with the comments and decisions made during the most recent Board of Finance meeting. At the March 19th Woodbridge Town Board Finance Meeting, the Board of Finance voted to reduce the requested Beecher budget from 0.76% increase to a 0% increase. Tom Handler from the Board of Finance shared his concern in asking the board, the Woodbridge Board of Education to make further reductions in the budget. He stated, they did amazingly good job coming in. His current budget reduction is a major shift from the February meeting in which Superintendent Gilbert presented his budget. The 0% increase results in a further hit to our staffing and thus our ability to meet student learning and the social emotional well-being of children, especially in light of everything that's going on. There'll be a devastating cut of a .5 social worker position who has been supporting families for 19 years. In addition, both a member of the art and library teams will be reduced to .7 positions. Also, a new full-time position of a school psychologist will be reduced to a .5 position. Please reconsider the impacts this will have on our community. I'd also like to read a letter that was submitted by a teacher which sums up the thoughts of many teachers. And actually, the importance of this position of a social worker was discussed tonight. Dear Superintendent Gilbert and members of the Woodbridge Board of Education, I am writing to ask you to please consider keeping Mrs. Kristen Demont as our school social worker. She's been an asset to Beecher Road School and her dismissal would have a direct effect on students needing support who are not covered under special education. Over the years, Mrs. Demont has provided guidance, support and care for several of my students who did not have individualized education plans. Her knowledge and professionalism were always evident during parent-teacher meetings as well as in her direct contact with children. No matter how busy Mrs. Demont was during the school day, she always made herself available to provide nurturing guidance to my students. Mrs. Demont has been an outstanding responsive classroom role model and is committed to our school values, the belief that social and emotional learning are just as important as academic learning is embedded in her daily work with children. In addition to Mrs. Demont's caseload work with children, she has also been a wonderful advocate for her staff. She thoroughly understands our contract and is always willing to adjust, address teacher concerns and questions. I've always appreciated her personal and professional advice. Mrs. Demont is supported by the entire faculty and staff. It's my hope that she will remain in a position at Beecher Road School. Thank you for your consideration. Allison Gorbowski, kindergarten teacher. So thank you for allowing me to share those thoughts.
Okay, thank you. We have a lot of action items, so I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, Dan and Jeff, seconded it. All those in favor of adjourning? Opposed? Thank you all. Be safe. Stay home. Wash your hands a lot. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.